All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 27th work session. Before we get started, Ms. Stevens has some really good news she wants to share with us.
Thank you. Many of you know, well, the board certainly knows, and I think a lot of folks in here know also, that the Bear Community Foundation has been working to raise money for the Center for Innovative Teachings, new campus development. And as a result of those efforts, the Bear Community Foundation has received a check for $50,000 from the Joint Development Authority of Bear County. This, as the Chair of the Board of Education serves on that committee. And when I was on it, we talked about the fact that the committee, that the Joint Development Authority really doesn't need money, but we had a developer who said he was willing to allow the authority to be a service agent, which would result in a percentage of money that they were paying to build this. And as a result of that, we have received a check for $50,000, which will go to the CFIT project. And that is another example of the county working with the school board and CFIT project. Because actually, Mayor Auburn made the motion that the money would be given to CFIT project, to Bear Community Foundation. And the chairman seconded that motion, I believe. So that's good news for us. It's just one of the many great things that are going on with the CFIT project. So I just want to bring everybody here to know about that, especially those folks out there listening to us tonight.
Great. Thanks. That is really, really fantastic. You see that support.
All right. So looking at next week's agenda, it looks like I'll have the invocation and pledge. We'll do the approval of the July 13 minutes, approval of the agenda. We won't have clean school committees this month. We'll talk about possibly starting that back up in September. It looks like we've got a few superintendent recognitions.
We will. Glad to have, have some live folks in here to hand those off.
Awesome. And any recognition of visitors or requests appear?
Not at this time.
Awesome. All right. So we'll go into superintendent's department reports. Dr. Green?
Yes. So the meeting has been reported there for your review. That's all I have for tonight. If you have questions.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Houston, business services report.
All right. Tonight, I'm going to go over the invoices between 10 and 24,999. Back before I was here, the board changed the policy of what the dollar threshold was for purchases to get board approval from 10,000 to 25,000. When that happened, the board requested that the finance department present all invoices between 10 and 25,000 to the board each month. So these are the invoices for July. I just wanted to kind of explain that to any members that might want to know why I do this every month. The first one is for Tech Optics. It was paid out of consolidated funds for $13,160. And it was for a projector and screen for the cafe at Russell Middle School. The next one is K-12 Solutions, paid out of the general fund for $11,255. And it's for infinite campus, five of four module, and that would be district-wide. Southern Computer Warehouse, $14,579.94, security awareness software, and that was a renewal. That's district-wide. Athens Janitorial Supply, $2,407.22 for seven restroom cleaners, and that's district-wide. Yellow Folder LLC, general fund, $12,864, employee records online, and that was a renewal. And then, of course, is district-wide. Charter System Foundation, $10,000, and that's for our charter system support, and that's renewable every year. That's district-wide. InterSync Studio LTD Limited, general fund, $12,490.98. That's for web hosting. That's a renewal. And of course, that affects district-wide. Blackboard Inc. is from the general fund, $22,677. It's a communication tool, and that's a renewal. Remind 101 is general fund, $24,880, and that's another communication tool, and that's a renewal. And Rebound, paid out of the capital projects fund for $20,520. And this is tennis balls for student furniture. And that was $43,750 tennis balls for Posenbeck, Auburn, and Appalachian High School furniture. So it does have to scratch the floor. Any questions?
A lot of tennis balls.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Perno, system operations report.
Good evening. May I have a call from the theater on the border? Just want to give you, we talk about our renovations and digital and things like that every month. And we're happy to do that. But I just want to talk for a minute about our building maintenance and custodial staff and the work they've done this summer to prepare our buildings and grounds. They've done a great deal of work. Our cleaning teams, site contractors have been very productive. We've pressure washed and cleaned windows. And we've waxed floors, floors. There's, there's fast there. More photos of our folks working. We've tested our building systems, done inspections on elevators, fire alarms, sprinklers, intercom, put out pine straw, cut our stormwater ponds, aerated and top dress fields, screened and recoded our wood gym floors. So just many, many things going on out there through the course of the summer to get our buildings ready. And I think we're in really good shape for the start of the school year. So I commend our, our main staff, our custodians, and our contractors who've worked so hard to get things ready out there to do a fine job. Now we'll get into our, our updates. That's like Auburn there. We'll just run through and show you the pictures. You've all seen these from month to month. But things turned out really well. You know, even though we had the wood floor there, we took the old bleachers out, expanded that floor, similar to what we did at St. Andrew's years ago. I've got a new logo there. The carpet that you do see, that's in band or chorus areas or media spaces, carpet tiles. And then, of course, the classroom tile there, and that's been the pattern. All right. So West Side Middle, we've seen this one come out of the ground. And finishing up that site work here over this last month, saw asphalt. Fieldhouse there, football field. Got everything buttoned up there at West Side. It's come along great. Another side to be out there. These are the summer renovations, and this is primarily taking carpet out of classroom areas, putting tile in. Sorry, this holds that. Just scroll through their classroom and corridor. Place the rubber in the gym. Front office area, quite a few changes there. Health and security sidewalk playground. Classroom. Okay, now we're at Bear Creek. So again, that's taking carpet out of classroom unless it's a music space. We've got carpet tile going in. Just going back in with a final tile. Even more, same thing. CFIT. Media space, CFIT. Find Bear High School. Go ahead and eat breakfast in there. Bring, bring lunch. Clean up, wipe up the school. Appalachian, that's a new school. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable to go in there. They really needed that refresh and that update, realize how much, really, until you see how that turned out. But very pleased with their look there. So the gym, music space, corridor. Good. Thank y'all. Let's take a minute and show those, show those off a little bit. Very pleased, very happy. And hopefully, all the schools will be excited. I think they are excited there. And get going. Any questions? Many of you here?
Joe, I have a comment. It's actually a question. When did you start on these projects? And how long did it take to complete them?
For renovations, you know, we're looking a year ahead where we're trying to be. So I know I'm coming at you all the time with these architect recommendations. Another construction manager recommendation, then guarantee back price recommendation. And that's usually going to be architect, spring, summer. The CM in the winter, actually in the fall, and then the guaranteed back price in the winter. Get this mixed it out as soon as people leave the building. And even before then, in some cases, the lights were changed out at CFIT, Auburn, Posenbeck, before school began. So we just have to lay out in front, like I say, at least a year.
But basically, with all of this flooring and all of the gym renovations and all that has been done since school's been out, is that correct?
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
It's amazing.
And you and your people can be commended for the work that you do in terms of planning ahead. And there's six big principles. I've painted up five proper planning principles for performance. And you guys do an excellent job. And I'm just so appreciative of the work that has been done this summer and every summer.
Thank you.
And the, and the work that you do.
Thank you. I think amidst COVID, it's even more, more so, that's the case. I mean, we're just hearing that over and over again, COVID, COVID, COVID. Maybe that's the case. I mean, we've got basketball goals at Auburn that are backordered. So we're waiting on that. There's an issue with paint, where we're trying to finish and touch up painting in areas that can't get paint. I don't quite understand that. But there's a factory somewhere that has, making sure that it's deployed. I don't know. Or people drive it to us? I don't know. But there's a ripple effect there. It's.
Well, and to go, what Ms. Stevens was saying, that the way you all plan ahead mitigated a lot of that because we were already in the plan, and you already had the plans ready. So, you know, where other, other organizations may have had to wait to get the plans to get started. And so that, I mean, there's going to be some of that next, probably next couple of years with, with some of those things. But I'm always blown away with how you and your team, especially as small as, as you are, small but mighty, get things done over the summer because something's not easy. And it's not, you know, and we've had labor shortage. We've had all kinds of things. And, but once again, nailed it.
He's a huge part of that. You all know that.
Absolutely.
He's bugging us to get the meetings. I need to, I need to sit down and talk about this. It's frustrating sometimes, you know, but that's why I do it. Because sometimes you've got the choice.
Well, just for the record, as the representative for Auburn Elementary, among other schools, I'm going to do a happy dance on that wood going in.
You know, as a Georgia football fan, it's tough to go in that school.
Yeah. That is true. For the kids.
Auburn looking, loving it.
Thank you all. Thank you, Joe. All right. Dr. Moten, teaching and learning?
She's had, had to miss. They've got a lot going on, but no updates tonight.
All right. So we're going down to, anything right now, Ms. Spex? All right. Thanks. We're going down to old business. So we have the policy revision, G A R H, employee leaves and absences. The superintendent recommends removing policy G A R H from public review and approving said policy. Did we get any comments on that?
We've not had any comments.
Everybody go with adding it to the consent agenda? All right. Then we've got new policy, G B I A, teacher evaluation appeals. The superintendent recommends removing policy G B I A from public review and approving said policy. Any comments on that one?
No comments on that one.
Can we add that one? Consent agenda? Okay. And then the last one is policy revision, I D E three, competitive interscholastic activities for grades six through 12. The superintendent recommends removing board policy I D E three, competitive interscholastic activities, grade six, 12, from public review and approving said policy. Any comments?
No comments.
Awesome. Can we add that one to consent agenda? All right. New business, FCC Emergency Connectivity Fund, Dell Chromebook RFP from John St. Clair.
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The FCC has a program designed to assist students in need of devices to perform schoolwork at home, at home being the important part, called the Emergency Connectivity Fund. This was a $7 billion, $7 billion program funded through one of the relief efforts that President Biden signed in the last couple of months. The program allocates up to $400 per device for school districts to purchase for students at home, with districts picking up any cost above $400. Devices purchased under this program remain the property of the school district, but must be assigned to the specific students identified as needing devices to take home for school use. In other words, I can't request 100 devices that will distribute as we need. I have to request 100 devices for 100 students we've already identified, and those devices go to those students. So we sent out a comprehensive survey this summer to identify need. We received 5,273 responses with 4,575 students identified as needing devices for home use. We posted an RFP for Dell Chromebooks, and 22 vendors responded with 27 responses. Dell directly provided six responses, and they basically, knowing the issues with chip shortages and their costs coming up, they gave us an increase in cost each month through December 2021 in anticipation of the supply chain issues. So all six of Dell's responses were the lowest cost response. And expectations are that the FCC will award these programs to schools either in August or early September. In that light, we chose Dell's September response as the lowest cost response we would be purchasing from. Of course, if we get an award earlier, we'll purchase at the lower cost. Should the process extend beyond September, we'll come back to the board for another approval process before we proceed. And so if you look at the list of responses below, we requested responses for a unit for one year, a unit with a one-year basic warranty, and then a unit with a three-year accidental no-fault warranty, where if the student drops it off a bus and it breaks, it's still covered. And the September bid from Dell came in at $423.07 with the three-year warranty. We talked with the, with Dr. McMichael in the cabinet, and we decided that the extra $23 per unit was a good investment in protecting these units for years two and three, and in year one, from accidents. So after approval by the board, the next step will be to submit our request to the FCC. And because the extremely short time the FCC is providing for this program, it was only a 45-day window that opened June, at the end of June, closes August 13th. We're requesting the board vote at this work session on the two RFPs that we have for our ECF funding, so that we can file it starting tomorrow. That way, if there are any issues that arise, we'll have time to adjust and fix whatever the problem was before running against the deadline of August 13th. So for clarity, the initial purchase is $1.83 million in Chromebooks that are 100% funded from federal ECF funds. And then the district's portion will be $105,545.25. And that's the overage that we're encumbering to get that three-year extra accident warranty. And that'll come out of district cares funds. We're also asking for authorization to continue to use this RFP for any purchases for the next few months through September 30th. And that funding will come from whatever department or school has requested quotes on Chromebooks. So the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Dell Chromebooks to Low Bitter Respondent Dell in the amount of $423.07 per Chromebook. From this, the superintendent recommends authorizing the immediate purchase contingent, of course, upon ECF funding, of 4,575 Chromebooks using the ECF funds and CARE funds for a total of 1.83 million from ECF funds and 105,000 from CARE's funds, again, contingent upon the, the award. And the superintendent further recommends authorizing additional purchases from this RFP through September 30th from various funding sources for a maximum total cap of 850,000. That'll let us buy up to another 2,000 Chromebooks should schools have funding that they, they would like to spend in that area during this time period, subject to normal board reporting guidelines. That was a mouthful. Sorry.
All right. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
John, your beard is getting very gray. It's just being awed by all of this work.
Man, at the beginning of summer, it was dark brown.
I understand. I understand. The, the serious question on this is, we had, how did we determine the 4,575 Chromebooks as opposed to the number of requests that we had for those?
So we specifically asked families responding to the survey we put out, two questions. Do you have sufficient internet access at home to be able to do schoolwork at home? Yes or no? And do you have sufficient devices for your student at home? An adequate device at home for your student to be able to do schoolwork at home? Yes or no? The, the, so this is being run by the same folks that run the eBay program. And the eBay program has a very comprehensive list of rules and qualifiers and hoops you have to jump through. Because of the speed that they put this one out, this program has almost no guidelines right now. So we are using our eBay consultant, who is very familiar with FCC guidelines and is our expert in this area, guided us in the creation of the survey. And there's, there's no real other qualifier than the family telling us, yes, we need this. And we have to document carefully exactly who asked for it. And we, we have to request a device for whoever asked for it, and only for that person. And we have to keep all that documentation. So the, the 4,575 came specifically from families saying, my student needs a device. And that could be, you know, one device, it's, it's per student. So if a family had three students who needed devices, they may have asked for three devices on three separate surveys.
That's my concern, is that parents may, I want to make sure that, you know, one device with three kids is not sufficient. So the question was phrased so that if they had, for example, three children and only one device, then we would be able to supply the other two devices. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We explicitly had the survey responses. It was, it was delineated, this is per child, each survey. So if a family had three children, they submitted three surveys.
And they knew they had to do three surveys?
Yes, ma'am. We had a, about a four paragraph explanation of the program, and we had the survey in both English and Spanish. And it went out electronically. We also had it at our summer lunch distribution sites. We had paper forms there. We asked principals to reach out to families. Knowing that in summer, you know, reaching families was difficult, we did kind of a blast. It was, I must give props and thanks to Shinley. I don't know if she's there. I asked her for her help, and she did an amazing job blasting the survey out through basically every means we had. Parent Link, it went out to, I think we even did, we did some news stories. If there was a way to publish this, we did.
Okay. My concern there is that we have almost 60 languages spoken in Bear County. And we're doing this in English and Spanish. Are we absolutely certain that we reached every family that we can reach to make sure that they are able to participate in this, in this program?
I'm extremely doubtful that we did. I, I do know we did all we could with the timeframe that the FCC has given us.
That's my other problem, is the timeframe on this.
It, it was terrible because there was no information released prior to the window opening, other than some vague ideas of what it might be. And they still haven't really released any guidelines or rules. It's our expectation that if this program is continued, there will be some subsequent rules and guidelines given to us for future uses. I'll also mention that the program has a $7 billion funding cap nationwide. If the $7 billion funding cap is not exhausted, and right now, based on feedback from our consultant with her, her clients, she's not seeing a great response rate. A lot of districts didn't know what to do or, or didn't decide to jump. I think about 20% of her clients did. Her expectation is that we, that the, the $7 billion will not be exhausted. If it is not exhausted, the FCC has indicated they'll release a wave two. Wave two will happen while school is in session, and we'll have more resources to be able to reach families, particularly, as you point out, families in additional languages. But there's no guarantee.
No child in this system who needs this service to be left out.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and this is, I know you're doing everything you can, John. I truly do. But this is a board issue. We need to ensure that every child who needs this can get, whether they speak English, Spanish, or whatever.
Is there not a program, John, that you can go on there that would plug in something that when we put whatever it is out there that we want families to see, that there could be a pull-down for whatever language it is that they speak and change it, like a translation? And then they can pull what language they need, and then it change it over to that language for them?
I know there are services out there like that. I would need to consult with Shinley about our website to see if that service is offered through them. And we'll certainly pursue that if that's the case. Again, what we put out there was done really fast, based on the, the deadlines that we were faced with.
Our website does have a translation dropdown on it. So if they went to the website, they would have that opportunity. Everything else has to be translated, and we have to have, we have to have enough lead time to find someone to translate it or go through the language line to get that done. So the lead time piece, you know, that's something we can be working on now. And when wave two comes, we'll be able to have it ready to go. But to echo what you're saying, is we move to what will wind up basically being a one-to-one program. This is a great first step, big first step towards that. But, but we're, you know, we're going to be funding some of that ourselves, too.
Just, just a little clarity, before they got the survey, they did end up on a landing page on our website where they could have dropped down the translation.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just, I'm concerned about that. And I'm really concerned about the timeframe for this, that we don't have enough time to properly do what we need to do, just because all this gets thrown out here. And here we sit. And so I commend you for the work that you've done on this. I just am really concerned, and I, I want to make sure that every family in this county has an opportunity to take advantage of this.
Is there not a way?
A degree more.
Is there not a way that when we send something out, whether it be from what other, other sources we use, that we can automatically link it back to our system that adds back?
We usually do that. We ask them to reference and have a landing site. Also, text remind also translates into 120 languages when we send those out. So those messages all went out in the other language. So probably did a better job than we thought, John.
John, this is Ricky.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. One, there was no, these students didn't have to qualify for this. All they, all they had to do to get one was fill out one of these forms and ask for it, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does, oh. Brown Rock, Texas, do they think they're going to have enough to get us all these in a timely fashion?
Right now, yes. Or maybe I should say, three days ago, yes. I, I don't know if the circumstances have changed. Dell, if you recall, a while back, we ordered some Chromebooks from another manufacturer. And I, I don't want to really mention the name because it's not their fault. But they ran into supply chain issues, and six months later, we still didn't have those. And we had to abandon it and come back to you and request approval for a different vendor who was Dell. Dell got us our devices within a matter of weeks. Dell has a, a very close relationship with Intel, the chipmaker. And they currently are not having these supply chain issues that other manufacturers seem to be having. I, I couldn't guarantee that a month from now, that won't be the case. But before we place the order, we'll ask that question.
As far as you know, they do now.
Yes.
Thank you.
The best bet right now in, in the industry for getting them in a timely manner is Dell.
And I do also want to reiterate, John, and he's proved, did a great job. I mean, a lot of districts, as Ms. Stevens just said, you know, this got thrown out with really no guidelines. And a lot of districts just passed because of that. And they really dug in and tried to do the best we could with the timeframe. So I'm sure with what I'm sure with what they've got done in the, you know, almost no time, basically, it's a great start.
So once the warranty piece is up and they start breaking, and we're responsible for replacing, are we at a spot in our budget where we can handle?
Well, as we're working through the, you know, working towards a one-to-one type system, we'll have to do that in phases. Because if you, you know, even if we had the money to buy them all at once, then when they, you know, when they come around and it's time to refresh, it would again be all at once, and we may or may not have the capital to do that, so we need to do that in stages. So, yeah, I think, you know, it's part of staging that, I mean, you never know what the economy is going to do for sure, but if things, you know.
John's answer to that question about they had them three days ago, do we need to vote on this tonight?
We'd like for you to, if y'all are comfortable with it, yes.
I'm very much begging you to do so, so that I can file immediately, in case there are any issues with the filings, so that I have time to respond.
Well, since John is begging, does anybody else have any questions? If not, I'll call for motion.
Make a motion.
All right, Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, we'll need to do that at the end of the meeting. We'll put that on the. I promise.
Thank you.
We'll move number one from new business to, to the voting section of the meeting, if that's all right.
All right, if you want to continue on with the emergency fund home internet access.
Okay, thank you, so this is the same program, the second question we asked families was, was do you have sufficient internet access to do work at home, and again, I need to emphasize, this funding is for, for devices and work that is used at home. It can be brought to the school, there are no rules against it, but the primary reason for it is to bridge the homework gap, so. You can't buy devices to use only in school, these have to go home with students. So the FCC's program allocates up to two hundred fifty dollars per device upfront, physical, one-time costs with an, as of yet undefined monthly cost, did I mention that there aren't a lot of rules out here yet? So it's an undefined monthly cost, but expected to be in the twenty-five dollar range for internet service. Internet service is paid for by the district through the ECF funding and provided to the home for families that have indicated that they lack adequate internet connectivity at home for school. The important distinction here is that the devices are one per child. Internet connectivity is one per household, so if you have one child or four, if you've asked for internet, you are eligible for one single internet connection to feed your, to feed your connectivity at home. So, again, it was the same survey, of the five thousand two hundred seventy-three responses, one thousand three hundred ninety-five students identified as needing a device for home use, representing seven hundred seventy-nine households. The, yeah, and there it is, the term is that only one internet service can be provided, provided for household. So an RFP was posted with language broadly asking for home internet service. We didn't define what type of internet service because we didn't want to limit the responses. We received eleven responses from nine vendors, as shown below. And responses are generally broken into two categories. One response is the standalone, which requires no setup, no physical installation. They basically hand you a hotspot, you turn it on and you go, very simple, no, no real upkeep or maintenance required. No installation required. Then the other responses are ones that require installation of service and equipment at the home, or the PDC, or both. And they have a higher degree of complexity to install and manage. Cable internet service, for instance, where somebody has to come into your home, provide cable into your house, run it to wherever your connectivity is, where you want to put your router. All the troubleshooting calls that go along with that kind of thing. And also, some of the responses that were more complex also had some parts that are ineligible costs that the district would have had to bear. And because the district assumes some level of responsibility for managing the home internet service, we decided that the best way to go was to focus solely on the responses that are standalone hotspots. So the low-cost response was Comcast with their in-house internet service at nine ninety-five a month. The next lowest cost was AT&amp;T with a hotspot at twelve dollars per month with no, no upfront cost, but a one-year commitment. And their other offering was the same twelve dollars per month cost. You buy the hotspot for eighty-five dollars, and then there's no commitment. Let's see, I lost my place. So we elected to focus solely on the responses that are standalone hotspots. This frees us from having to coordinate installation of fiber DSL or cable. We don't have to deal with trouble calls with technicians going on site, coordinating with families. And we don't have to manage any equipment at the PDC, and we avoid any district out-of-pocket expenses. There's also a level of uncertainty on what expenses are eligible to be covered under the ECF for wired installations such as fiber DSL and cable. And it's possible that if we chose such an option, we would incur out-of-pocket expenses that we don't know about now, but we would get awarded and then told, hey, part of this bill is yours. Whereas there are clear instructions from the FCC that a mobile hotspot purchase of up to two hundred fifty dollars is covered with a monthly cost of somewhere between ten to twenty-five dollars expected. The low-cost mobile hotspot provider, AT&amp;T, has good average in Barrow County, they provided us a map showing almost a hundred percent coverage. They meet the cost limitations described by the ECF. And they have a simple model for deployment of devices with good internet speeds. To avoid contractual obligation, for instance, what happens if we provide a device to a household and they move in six months? We're on the hook for the next six months of that service. So to avoid a contractual obligation, we prefer the proposal that has the purchased hotspot and the monthly service of twelve dollars a month for a one-year cost, I'm sorry, for a year-one cost of two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents per family. And a year-two cost of a hundred forty-four dollars per household served, if the program, of course, is funded in years two and beyond. At seven hundred seventy-nine households, these costs come to a hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, twenty-one cents for year one. And if funded in years two and beyond, the cost will drop to a hundred twelve thousand, one hundred seventy-six for years two and beyond. There, again, it's possible there may be subsequent filing opportunities to add additional families in need during the duration of this program. The FCC has provided few details on the longevity of this program to date. However, one detail published is that if, is that if the initial funding of the program, seven billion, is not exhausted, yeah, as I mentioned previously, there may be a second wave if there's still funding available. Due to the uncertainty of when a second wave may be opened and how much time the FCC will provide districts to respond, we are requesting authorization from the board to proceed immediately. If there is a second wave and we file our surveys and identify who needs it, we'd like to proceed immediately without seeking additional board approval in the event that the FCC window and the timing of the next board meeting don't line up well to have time to file. So the financial impact is a hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, twenty-one cents for year one. If funded, a hundred twelve thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars for years two and beyond. A hundred percent from FCC, from federal ECF funds, no contractual obligation or financial expense to the district. Additionally, if additional option, funding waves come up, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents per additional household for the first year, a hundred forty-four dollars per household for years two and beyond. If funded, again, no contractual obligation or financial expense to the district. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the ECF-funded purchase of home internet service for families in need from AT&amp;T in the amount of a hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars, twenty-one cents for year one. Hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred seventy-six for years two and beyond, as long as the program is funded. From federal ECF funds, no contractual obligation or expense to the district. The superintendent further recommends authorizing additional ECF-funded purchases of home internet service under this purchasing vehicle from AT&amp;T for additional families that may qualify during additional filing opportunities that arise at a year-one cost of two twenty-eight ninety-nine for household, and a year-two and beyond of a hundred forty-four per household. Again, that was quite a mouthful and complex to follow, so apologies for that, and any questions?
Any questions?
Do you need early, do you need approval tonight on this?
It's the same filing deadline, and I'm requesting the same vote today, so that if there are any issues, we have plenty of time to fix whatever's wrong and refile. Yes, ma'am.
So, John, let me make sure I understand this, and it says this here in writing, and I think I understood you to say that if the CARES Act goes away, this goes away.
This is not CARES Act funding, this, this was another separately funded item, so it received a flat seven million dollars. When that seven million dollars is gone, we don't know what happens. Our anticipation is that, once you've opened this door, they're going to find a way to keep this program running. But this is a separate piece from the CARES Act.
Okay, but it is federally funded?
This is, yes, yes, sir.
We do know that administrations change and focus change, so there is a possibility that this could go away.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we understood that.
And I think, I think when we distribute these, we need to make sure, clear to the families that there's no guarantee of how long the, these programs will be available to them.
That's that paragraph, the next paragraph, it says household up to two years beyond. That beyond means as long as the federal government's still paying for it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other question I had, since it's AT&amp;T in the fine print, if it goes down, since we're not going to go out there, is there any kind of timeline that says that they'll get out there and get it back up so that those, those households aren't without internet, so that they can do, they're without, sometimes it takes AT&amp;T and even other carriers days to get out there, to fix.
We don't, we don't have any, those are called service level agreements, we don't have any service level agreements with this program. It's the same as if you went to the AT&amp;T store and bought a hotspot on your own, that's basically the equivalent of what we're doing. Someone will call customer support, and they will get the problem resolved at their best capabilities, we don't have any guarantees of response time.
So potentially, they, if they go out, they could be off the dates and not be able to do their work?
Potentially, yes, AT&amp;T's been fairly reliable. It's going to be one of two possibilities, either AT&amp;T has an outage and they have multiple customers conflicted, at which point AT&amp;T will be moving heaven and earth to get that fixed, or it's going to be the hotspot that is bad, and if the hotspot goes bad, it'll be a matter of, usually of just swapping the hotspot out, so that may take a day or two, would be my expectation, but we don't get any guarantees with this program.
Well, to Ms. Kelly's point, I think we need to make, you know, obviously we need to do this, but I think it needs to be clear to parents that we are pretty dependent on AT&amp;T and their service, we don't really have a
We're kind of the.
If it goes down, it goes down, it's not school system's issue, it's an AT&amp;T issue.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, I think we need to have a handout sheet where we give out devices and our internet explaining what exactly they're getting and what we are and are not able to do with it.
Right, and how long this program may or may not last.
Yes, ma'am.
But it has to be in every language too, or whatever language those people are from. The obvious point is to make sure that our children have access to this so that they can become
One more quick question, is, what's the process if a student moves or graduates? Is there any, turn it back in, do we have access to do something with that service or Chromebook at that point in time?
So I'm pretty curious about that myself. What I can tell you is that the district owns the internet, the district owns the device. It does not belong to the families, so it is a device we are, we are assigning it to the families, but we are the owning party. So if, if the student leaves the device or the internet connectivity hotspot comes back to us. What is not clear yet is what we're allowed to do with that, are we allowed to assign it to another family, do we have to turn off the service? That's one of the reasons I didn't want a contractual obligation, because we don't know yet. The FCC has not made that clear, and, and we and everyone else in the country are waiting on some further guidelines on that, but it does come back to us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, John, we'll vote on that in a little while, if you want to continue on with audio enhancements.
Yes, sir, this one's a lot easier. Give me one second to pull it up, please.
You have.
It's a lot easier to explain. So as part of the audio enhancements classroom system, that's the, the system we purchased that has the camera in the center, it has the microphone for the teacher and the speakers, and so the teacher can talk in a normal voice, and everyone in the room can hear the panic button, the whole nine yards. Part of that system, there is a feature called ViewPath that teachers use to record and distribute classroom sessions. Teacher will activate the recording, the, they run their lesson, they terminate the recording, the recording gets stored online, and they can then view that recording, and they choose to either give it to, you know, their peers, if they're doing some professional development with their peers, or they give it out to their students. If it's a lesson, the students need to be able to review from home. And so, use of that part of the system, ViewPath, requires a yearly license. The first year of installation is free, and then the subsequent years, you pay a yearly license fee. The yearly license fee is a hundred six dollars per classroom. The, there are a hundred forty-eight classrooms that were installed in two thousand nineteen, for which we are paying a hundred six dollars per classroom, normal cost, for a total of fifteen thousand, six eighty-eight. There are six hundred forty-nine classrooms that were installed in two thousand twenty, of course COVID hit. Because of the circumstances of two thousand twenty and the fact that we really didn't use ViewPath, Audio Enhancements is giving us a one-time fifty percent discount for the licenses for these classrooms as a way to help the fact that they, we didn't really get to use them to their full benefit. So those classrooms are fifty-three dollars per classroom, total of thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars, and again, that's only a one-year discount that we're getting. So, the financial impact totals to fifty thousand, eighty-five dollars from IT general funds. And the superintendent recommends authorizing the payment of fifty thousand, eighty-five dollars to Audio Enhancements for the use of ViewPath in the total of seven hundred ninety-seven district classrooms in the coming two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year.
Any questions? John, do you need this tonight, or can we go to the next?
This can wait for normal processing.
All right, can we add this one to the content agenda? All righty, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Miss Beg, Staffing Services.
Good evening, I'm her best, Doug Snyder, who is the Southeast Senior Vice President of Southeast Operations for ESS, to join me tonight to talk about our request for a change in our staffing solution for substitutes. As you all know, we talked a great deal last year about the important impact that subs were having on our students. It's an important impact every year, but it was particularly tough for us and for every school system in state to sub appropriately last year. At the end of the year, there was a lot of discussion on the GASPA, and GASPA is the statewide association for personnel directors. Regarding, you know, who did, who did everybody use, what was the success rate, who did well, who didn't do well? And the company that really stood out was ESS. And so we began talking with some of our neighbors in our recent group about what they'd done, what their success rate was, how did they handle the challenges? And again, ESS kept coming up. And so tonight, we're asking the board to approve this super to enter into a contract with ESS for substitute services. So we have a little short PowerPoint tonight to share with you, just to give you a little bit of background. We have, since two thousand sixteen, used Kelly's services. And our fill rate has been in the mid-eighties for most of that time. Last year, it dropped to sixty-seven percent. That was significant for us. We'll let Doug talk just a little bit about how ESS has helped us in this area.
Thank you for having me tonight, we're excited about the opportunity, one thing that does help ESS as a company is that we are K-12 focused on, so we only work the school business. Right now, currently, we're part of about forty-one districts throughout Georgia, continuing to grow every year. We dedicate our services to, to our customers by hiring and supporting onsite operation. And based on the evaluation for the school this year, our assessment was a two-person team that would support this operation. That person, the government community, and do a lot of community involvement in schools, open houses, PTO meetings, ballgames, community events, because the substitutes that work for the district all come right here from the community, and not directly from the community. And so what we want to do is make sure that we're out there spreading the word, possibly becoming such. And so what we want to do is make sure that we're out there spreading the word about possibly becoming substitute with this district and helping people know that we can train them to become substitutes. We have a great training program as well. So we're excited. I think the enhanced service, it will be a standing meeting that we're going to develop with the district to have constant communication on our recruiting plans, our hiring numbers, so we can make sure it will be the best district and that's most important.
So as mentioned, they currently service forty-one Georgia partners. I've reached out and spoken with at least half of those folks. They are very good reports. I think there are eleven that have transitioned from Kelly Services to ESS. And so I was particularly interested to hear what they had to say about their transition. They were very excited about what they have, the process they've gone through and the improvements that they have seen. I think we are probably one of the larger systems, I would say. Savannah, Chatham County is a larger system. Carroll County, Floyd County, those are some of the ones that typically you'll hear us talk about in comparison. So we did talk specifically with them because they're equal in size. So at this point, we would like to ask to approve a contact to be entered into with ESS for substitute services. Any questions?
So, yes, ma'am. First of all, let me just slide it out where I can see my eyes are from there. And that's my second place, thank you. That makes sense. You're from Texas. So you have offices in Georgia?
Let's try to answer that question. So our partnerships and how we operate is that each individual school district we partner with, we hire a team that's dedicated just to that district. So what we would love to do is actually hire some two folks here locally in the community, maybe house or division. So it will be a community that serves the other communities.
So what is the financial cost to the system?
We're actually going to be less expensive than we currently are spending now.
I have lunch. It's about six percent savings, which will equal about forty thousand dollars based, forty thousand dollars based on eight hundred thousand dollars we spent last year.
So basically you're going to tell us you're cheaper at that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. She was telling us what the fill rate was, Kelly. What is y'all's fill rate for, for a system like Chatham County?
Yeah. So last year, we've been averaging about ninety-eight percent fill rate. Last year we ended up with ninety percent. Now Savannah was a little different because they're a larger school district, very similar to ours. They had a lot of virtual days where they, they didn't actually opt in to go to school. But a comparison here locally would be next door in Jackson County. And last year we finished out Jackson with COVID and everything going on at eighty-nine percent. A year prior to that, it was ninety-nine percent.
What, what's your average time once, once a client, once somebody gives you and says, we need this many, what's your average turnaround time to get an applicant, get them processed?
So our goal, I think, most importantly would be to excessively recruit substitutes in the community. Most of the districts we partner with always have a lack of enough substitutes. And that really defines your ability to fill and how fast you can fill those positions. So our first and foremost job would be transitioning current substitutes. And the great thing is we pay weekly, we have to have access to benefits at more than forty hours a week. There's not going to be changes, the same system that, that we use, the ASOP system. So from that standpoint, seamless will be very, it'll be a seamless transition of substitutes. But we know that you're going to need more. And I think that's the identifying key thing. So with the partnership with the district and some of the things that we want to do, our first and foremost goal will be to expand and greatly do a lot of recruiting and we'll be reporting those numbers on an consistent basis. But I think that's the key in making sure that you're meeting, any customers needing to go out states, you have to have enough substitutes available in the pool to be able to fill positions as they come in.
Now, you have, and, and I'm speaking because my husband's been a recruiter for over thirty years. So that's why I'm asking the questions we get. Do you have weekly meetings with them to tell them where you are in that process?
Our meetings will be established with the district.
Right.
Now, the folks here on site will have daily interaction, communication from a corporate level, support from senior level leadership, obviously supporting more monthly operation calls. And that could be, you know, further expenditures. I mean, give an example, one of the markets right now we're trying to build. Right? So we're going to see if that stuff works. So it's basically uncovering every rock to make sure we find every available candidate within the community. But in order to do that, you have to be out. You can't sit behind a desk or a computer. So that's where the school interaction, community events will come into play for our partnership.
I want to stop at where the savings come from. So are you paying the same thing? Are we paying the same thing for our substitutes that we're currently paying and using your staff?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the rates, the pay rates were set by the district. So that doesn't change. Our cost at a district per substitute per day is what's different. Very for the supplement.
Thank you.
Doug mentioned one factor that we felt like was very important as well. And that is that they use the same platforms for entering subs, requesting subs. So our teachers and principals are, are, are already familiar with ASOP. And that is the same platform that we will be using. So minimal training there. We felt like that was very Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I have a statement I guess I need to make. You know this lady right here? Have you got to know her?
I have.
If she's not going to be happy, I'm not going to be happy. You keep her happy.
That is our goal. Absolutely. That's, that's how we approach our board. It's, it's great relationships, glement, great service. And our folks are obviously, I don't have access to the website she's talking about. It's only for school administrators. But it's good to hear that people have great things to say. That's the mission. We're trying to make every school. You've got to fill every classroom. It's kind of no child on my side. So no educator, the education doesn't begin. So that's our goal.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Pernow, architect recommendation. Oh, are we good to put that last one on the consent agenda? Perfect.
Okay. I mentioned maintenance earlier. Go back real quick. I want to thank Greg Webb. Should have done that earlier. We're so fortunate to have Greg. I think we have the best record of maintenance in the state and I just, I'm blessed to work with him every day. I learn from him every day. The way he goes about his business, it's just, it's no nonsense. He takes on the tough stuff and just deals with it head on. So great. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we also talked about architects and how often we're bringing them forward. So we have a recommendations tonight. The superintendent recommends approval of Cunningham, Forehand, Matthews, and Moore for architecture services for renovations to Bethland Elementary School, County Line Elementary School, and non-state funded projects. Again, we want to get ahead of things. We don't have a scope of work established yet for any of these things, but this is the first step. And so when we sit down and we talk with Jennifer about money and we talk with Cabinet about what projects we do want to take on, once we sort of get, get a direction there, we want to have that architect ready to go. Then, of course, we'll come back with a construction manager recommendation for whatever that project or group of projects is. And then after that, we'll come to you with a guaranteed maximum price recommendation for that project or projects. So we're taking those steps. This is the first one. We feel like we want to be in Bethlehem and County Line next summer if we can to do, do some work. At least one phase or an initial phase. And then there are other things we need to address with our athletic facilities, act facilities, maintenance, PDC, Old Bethlehem, Old County Lines, SIM, C-FIT, those places that don't get state money. Again, it doesn't mean we're going to go, you know, do that work next summer. But we probably will at some of these facilities and, and we'll bring that scope to you once, once we've got that established. So this is that first step down, down that road. So I have to answer any questions that you all might have.
Joe, I don't, this is really not about the architect. It's, if you think that's who you want to use, I'm all for that. Or when we talk about summer, our end date and our start date for school affects everything that y'all have to do. Y'all got to cram it in there. Whatever that looks like. Do we have a calendar for next year already? Did we already approve that?
No, we did two years, the last, last year and this year.
So we'll do next, the next two years. Okay. I, I want to make sure we look at being able to set these renovations up to be successful.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Got you.
All right. Any other questions? Consent agenda? All right. Thank you, Jim. All right. Ms. Houston, budget amendment.
All right. The superintendent recommends the following budget amendment that will impact the general fund, ARPS CARES Fund, and the capital project funds. So the initial budget for the CARES funds included four million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in facility upgrades. Because of the regulations on use of federal funds for construction projects, we are asking that we move those construction projects out of the CARES funds and put them into the capital project fund. Now, this will put a burden on our capital project fund. And it will hinder the school system from being able to build a new elementary school and expand FASA in the next few years. So in order to lessen that burden, we are also asking to move four million, twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars of custodial labor and supplies out of the general fund and into the CARES fund. This will free up four million dollars in the general fund that we can then transfer to the capital project fund to help future projects without the need at this point for any sort of bond property tax. So what we're going to do is move four point six million dollars out of CARES fund. We're going to then put four million dollars back into CARES fund and janitorial supplies because it's easier to spend federal funds on the janitorial supplies and labor than it is for these capital projects. Then we're going to move four point six million dollars of expenditures back into the capital project funds for all of these capital projects that we're doing. We're going to transfer over four million dollars from the general fund to help supplement those, to pay for those funds. And then in the general fund, it's a complete wash. We're just taking the janitorial expenses, moving them to CARES fund, and then using that money that's been freed up to move over to capital projects. Yes, y'all look like you have a lot of questions.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just I'm not even going to say anything about this. I think you've done a wonderful job of making sure that we spend our dollars in the most effective, efficient way possible based on the I'm going to be kind and just say CARES Act without a few adjectives before that. So basically, we're still going to move forward with our projects as we wanted to do. And we're just switching dollars from one pot to another pot to make sure that we can do what we need to do in the most cost-effective way. Is that what I
Absolutely. Yes. We keep these capital projects in the CARES fund using federal funds. The cost, the, the construction projects will cost a lot more because of this thing called the Davis Bacon Act. Davis Bacon Act makes you, makes contractors pay the prevailing, the federal prevailing wage for an electrician, for a plumber, those type of things, which is usually a higher wage than what George is paying for that, the contractors are paying for those services. So these contracts, these projects will cost a lot more if we leave, leave them in the CARES fund. So being a good steward of the taxpayer's money, we're going to take them out of there and just switch it up and switch over the janitorial labor and supplies over there, free up that money, put it into the capital project fund to help pay for those.
So the schools still get built? The, this, the elementary school still be built when they're planning on it?
It's still in the plans.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, no change in, no change in that at this point. It's just the funding mechanism, switching.
Good to hear. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you for stressing on winning. No, you do.
All right. Thank you. Consent agenda?
Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Before we go forward, I just want to take just a quick second and just give you a, we're, you, you all may have heard that the CDC changed some regulate or changed some of their recommendations today. And that's all they've changed is recommendations and dealing with masks in schools and a couple of districts have already, I think prematurely personally, but decided to go back to a mask mandate, those type of things. I just want to see if y'all have any questions and, and also let you know and let anyone listening know that we are not planning on changing any of the guidance we put out at this point. We're, we're planning on just keeping, keeping straight as we, we've talked about all summer. Yes, we've picked up a little bit, but it's still well below where we were this time last year. And there's a lot, I had a pretty long meeting today with the RISA area superintendent and a couple of representatives from the Department of Health. And I'll, I've still got to type up my notes, but I'll, I'll get those out for you. But while, again, while it is ticking up and there are some, you know, some, always going to be some concerns with this thing, it's nowhere near the level of some of what we're hearing and, you know, might be out there in the media. And it's also not to the point where we feel like we need to make any changes. So I just wanted to clarify that and see if y'all had any further questions on that.
I don't have any questions. I have a statement to make. Nobody that I have seen in any type of governmental, federal government has added the number of people who have had the virus and who are immune without taking shots to this narrative that we are hearing about how we're all going to die because of whatever. And if you haven't had shots. And it concerns me. I understand that parents are concerned. But the great majority of the parents that I'm here with are saying that there are more risks to their, to their children having to wear masks than there are with them not, based on their interactions with children. So I, I commend you for saying our policy is not at this time changed. Now, if there is something going down the road.
We, we watch it every day and, and
Yes, but at this point.
Continue to keep everybody posted if there are changes, but
I would be extremely disappointed if the school district, if this board decided that they were going to require masks for children. If parents want their children to wear masks, I'm fine with that.
And we do in accordance, you know, we, we also ask or, or, you know, would like, strongly suggest that if you're the non-vaccinated visitor to the school, that they do mask up to come in because that's not, you know, we have our children are co-horted. We can, if someone gets sick, we can take care of that pretty easily. But the people coming in and out of the building, you know, we still want to be extra cautious because they children, you know, but, but it's right now, there's no indication that I've seen or that staff has seen or that we need to make a, kind of a knee jerk reaction at this point. So any other questions? All right. If you have any, let me know. We'll keep you posted as we move through this.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I don't think we have any committees meeting over the next month. So at this time, we will go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or, or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent and to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition of or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote.
Yes.
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 Ms. Bramlett and Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
All right. Thank you, guys.